I hereby call the ninth day of the third regular session of the 23rd Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Senator Lilia May, amen.
Senator Arretoz. Senator Christian. Senator Figuer. Senator Colan. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence.
Amen.
Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romelo. Senator Urusamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mrs. Speaker, ten members are present.
With that, we have a quorum to transact business. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. That is item four, reading of the Journal.
Floor Leader Lawrence.
Morning, Speaker and members. I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. Discussion, objections? None? We will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're now on item number five, Presidential Communications. We have two of them, and they are numbers 23-219 and number 23-220.
Thank you. Members take note, especially number 23-220, which is important, that we consider at least some of them. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. That is item six, FASM Supreme Court Communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, Member Communications, none also. Item eight, Departmental Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker. Item nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, we do not have any, Mrs. Speaker. Item 10, State Communications, none. Item 11, State Supreme Court Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker. Item 12, Municipal or Town Communications, none also. And item number 13, Foreign Government Communications, we have one, and it's number 23-53.
Continue.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're now on item 14, Miscellaneous Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Order of the day.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Under the order of the day, we have item 15, Standing Committee Reports. We have one, and it's Standing Committee Report Number 23-50 on Congressional Bill Number 23-67 from your committee on TNC for adoption.
Acting Chair, Vice Speaker Romelo.
Short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Vice Chair, Acting Chair, Vice Speaker Romelo.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I wish to defer action on this said bill to tomorrow.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress delay its action on Standing Committee Report Number 23-50. Discussion? Any objections? If none, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has deferred its action on Standing Committee Report Number 23-50. Short recess. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're still under Standing Committee Reports for item number 15. Please disregard the awaiting list number 23-15 for the Standing Committee Reports awaiting the 24 hours requirement.
Next item.
Item 16, Special Committee Reports, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 17, For Assignment of Measures and Communications, please refer to referral sheet number 23-35.
Chairs and members, please take note of the referral sheet. Next item.
Unfinished Business for item 18, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're now under the Bill calendar. The first bill under the Bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number 23-72 for first reading. CB number 23-72 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 20-155 as amended by Public Laws Numbers 20-177, 20-188, 21-61, 21-88, 21-119, 21-150, 22-08, 22-43, and 22-119 by amending Section 6 thereof for the purpose of changing the allotment of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompeii State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Figure.
Short recess. Chairman Figuer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Moved that Congress passes on first reading. Congress Bill Number 23-72.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading. CB number 23-72. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, and without objection, discussion is closed. We will now vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Arretoz. Senator Christian.
Amen.
Senator Figuer. Senator Colan. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence.
Amen.
Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romelo.
Amen.
Senator Urusamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mrs. Speaker, we have 10 affirmative votes to the said bill under first reading.
Thank you. With that, Congress has passed on first reading, CB number 23-72. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're currently on Congressional Bill Number 23-73 for first reading. CB number 23-73 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 21-201 as amended by Public Laws Numbers 21-219, 21-223, 21-229, 21-241, 22-14, 22-28, 22-31, 22-51, 22-67, 22-104, and 23-21 by amending Section 4 thereof for the purpose of changing the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Pompeii State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move that Congress pass on first reading. Congress Bill Number 23-73.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading, CB number 23-73. Discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Figuer.
I have a proposed floor amendment to the bill. A proposed floor amendment has been duplicated and distributed to members, and because of its lengthy, I ask that we dispense with the reading of the proposed floor amendment. So I move for the adoption of the proposed floor amendment.
Any second?
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment by Chairman Figuer be adopted. Discussion, short recess. We're still on discussion of the offered floor amendment by Chairman Figuer to CB number 23-73. Any?
Question.
If no objection, question has been called for. We will vote on the adoption of the proposed amendment by Chairman Figuer to CB number 23-73. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The offered floor amendment by Chairman Figuer to CB number 23-73 has now been adopted by Congress. We now have CD1. Any further discussion? If none, and no objection, question has been called for. We will vote on first reading, CB number 23-73, CD1. By roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Arretoz. Senator Christian. Senator Figuer. Senator Colan. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence.
Amen.
Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romelo.
Amen.
Senator Urusamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mrs. Speaker, 10 members voted for the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading, CB number 23-73, CD1. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're now on Congressional Bill Number 23-75 for first reading. CB number 23-75 is a bill for an act to further amend Section 208 of Title 52 of the Code of the Federated States of Marginesia Annotated as amended by Public Law Number 18-114 to reduce the cost of living allowance to zero and for other purposes.
Chairman Arretoz.
Thank you, Speaker. I move to defer action on this said bill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defers action on to CB number 23-75 to tomorrow's calendar. Any objection? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has deferred its action on CB number 23-75 to tomorrow's calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Please take note that the motion that we voted on was to defer action on CB number 23-75 to the next session of Congress, and not next session day. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're now on Congressional Bill Number 23-70, CD1, for second and final reading. CB number 23-70, CD1, is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 19-124 as amended by Public Laws Numbers 19-133, 19-140, 19-150, 20-05, 20-15, 20-33, 20-48, 20-63, 20-71, 20-156, 20-175, 21-22, 21-52, 21-146, 21-195, 21-213, 21-244, 22-62, and 22-111 by amending Sections 2 and 6 thereof to change the use and allotment of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure projects and other programs for Yap and Pompeii States and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Speaker.
Floor Leader Lawrence.
I move to defer action on this bill to tomorrow's session.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defers its action on CB number 23-70, CD1. Discussion, objections? If none, we will vote on said motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has deferred its action on CB number 23-70, CD1. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We're now on Congressional Bill Number 23-71 for second and final reading. CB number 23-71 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number 19-54 as amended by Public Laws Numbers 19-62, 19-75, 19-79, 19-99, 19-119, 20-04, 20-56, 20-82, 20-127, 21-20, 21-117, 21-169, 21-174, 21-194, 21-205, 21-233, 22-15, 22-54, and 22-109 by amending Section 4 thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Pompeii and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
You tomorrow. Mr. Speaker, I move-
Chairman Christian.
For, move that Congress defer its action on this bill also to tomorrow's calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defers its action on CB number 23-71. Discussion, objections? If none, we will vote on said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has deferred its action on CB number 23-71. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Nemea.
I move for the withdrawal and placement of CB 23-61 for action on today's calendar.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that, short recess. Congress is back in session. The motion before us is for placement of CB number 23-61 on today's calendar for action. Floor Leader, any motion to suspend?
I move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our actions on the withdrawal and placement of the said bill.
Any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules on the placement of CB number 23-61 on today's calendar for action. Discussion, objections? If none, we will vote on said motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We are now on the main motion on placement of CB number 23-61 on today's calendar for action. Any further discussion? If none, we will vote on said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now placed on today's calendar for action, CB number 23-61. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Under the Bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number 23-61 for first reading. CB number 23-61 is a bill for an act to amend Section 505 of Title 24 of the Code of the Federated States of Marginesia Annotated by putting an exemption for long line and pole and line fishing in the closed area, the 12-mile area seaward of the territorial sea, not to extend beyond 24 nautical miles from the baseline from which the breadth of the territorial sea is measured and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemea.
Move for the passage of said bill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading, CB number 23-61. Discussion?
Mrs. Speaker.
Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
I would like to offer the following oral amendment to the bill. On, in the title, line 1, 2, line 2, where it says "and pole and line fishing", delete the phrase "and pole and line", so that it reads exemption for long line fishing. And in the body of the bill, line 11, beginning line 10, delete "pole and line" on line 10, so that line 10 and 11 reads that long line fishing in the closed area are exempted. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment by Chairman Christian be adopted. Short recess. We're still on discussion of the offered oral amendment by Chairman Christian to CB number 23-61.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, at this time, I wish to withdraw my amendment, my oral amendment, and in lieu thereof, offer an amendment that has been written and distributed which includes a few technical changes that I failed to mention. And so, Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw my oral amendment offered on Congress Bill 23-61. Maybe the good Lord doesn't want me to withdraw, huh?
Okay. What is the? Short recess. There is that request by Chairman Christian that he withdraw his amendment-
May I do that?
-that he made earlier.
Are we in session already, Mr. Speaker?
We're in session.
Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw my oral amendment previously offered on the said bill.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment by Chairman Christian to CB number 23-61 be withdrawn. If no objection, the motion is now withdrawn. We're still on discussion on CB number 23-61 on first reading.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
I move to offer the following amendments as written and distributed on the 12th of January for adoption as amendment to this said bill before Congress, Mr. Speaker. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to CB number 23-61 offered by Chairman Christian be adopted. Discussion? Chief Clerk, please read the amendment.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. We now have a floor amendment to Congressional Bill Number 23-61 offered by Senator Peter M. Christian. It reads as follows. Item 1, Page 1, Title, Line 1, Delete 505 and Insert 506 in lieu thereof. Item 2, Page 1, Title, Lines 2 and 3, Delete the following: "and pole and line". Item 3, Page 1, Line 1, Delete 505 and Insert 506 in lieu thereof. Item 4, Page 1, Line 3, Following 19-167, Insert the following: "and renumbered by Public Law Number 20-167". Item 5, Page 1, Line 4, Delete 505 and Insert 506 in lieu thereof. Item 6, Page 1, Line 10, Delete the following: "and pole and line". Item 7, Page 1, Line 11, Delete the word "are" and Insert the word "is" in lieu thereof.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. So we're still on discussion to CB number, or on the offered floor amendment by Chairman Christian to CB number 23-61. Discussion? If no discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will now vote on the offered floor amendment to CB number 23-61 offered by Chairman Christian. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We have adopted the floor amendment to CB number 23-61 offered by Chairman Christian. We now have CD1. Discussion? Chairman Urusamal, you have the floor.
Yeah, I don't mean to continue the debate on this bill, but with regard to penalty, it's very clear what is intended here in the law, current law, which says any violator fishing vessel shall be liable for a civil penalty of not less than $15,000 and not more than $50,000. Clear to me. So what is the problem here?
Chairman Nemea, would you care to venture a, an explanation?
I'll have to look into that, but based on what we have gathered from how the, I mean, from our agency, Norma, the penalty based on historical practices have exceeded that very amount. But that very language, we need to look at it reflecited. Maybe one of my colleagues can come in and offer anything, but as Chair, I would, I would like to further look into that.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
I want to agree with Senator Urusamal that there is already stipulated in the law the parameters of penalty, amount of penalty. However, in this particular case, it's not the issue of penalty that we are speaking to. It's the issue of deleting a part of a fishing activity from our exempted areas. And I would encourage Senator Urusamal and Senator Nemea to work with Norma to improve our citation program that has been discussed for a long time, which will alleviate the judicial process that often took too long and frustrate fishing companies.
Thank you, Chairman Christian. Any further discussion on the bill, CD1?
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on the discussion on CB number 23-61, CD1.
Question, Mr. Speaker?
Well, if no objection, question has been called for. We will vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Arretoz. Senator Christian.
Amen.
Senator Figuer. Senator Colan.
First reading.
Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence. Floor Leader Lawrence. Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romelo.
Amen.
Senator Urusamal. Senator Urusamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mrs. Speaker, we have 10 affirmative votes to the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading, CB number 23-61, CD1. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
None, Mrs. Speaker.
If no further bills, next. Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I wish to offer the withdrawal and place CB number 23-91 to on today's calendar for action.
on today's calendar for action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one on today's calendar for action. Short recess. Congress is back in session. There is that motion to withdraw and place CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one, and take note that the rules are still suspended. If no objection to the placement of CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We have now placed CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one on today's calendar for action. Chief Clerk, next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on Congressional Bill Number Twenty-three dash ninety-one for first reading. CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number Eighteen dash eighty-nine, as amended by Public Laws Numbers Eighteen dash one oh two, eighteen dash one ten, eighteen dash one sixteen, nineteen dash oh two, nineteen dash oh nine, nineteen dash twenty-seven, nineteen dash twenty-eight, nineteen dash thirty-one, nineteen dash fifty-eight, nineteen dash one twelve, twenty dash forty-four, twenty-two dash ninety-eight, and twenty-two dash one ninety-four, by amending section nine thereof to modify the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move that Congress pass first reading twenty-three, here, CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on first reading CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one. Short recess. Congress is back in session. We are still on discussion to CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one for first reading.
Speaker.
Chair, Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and for the record, the said bill that I withdraw or introduce, it's for the state of Koshai, and it is also the recommendation of the Alati of this item that is amended, which is the governor of the state of Koshai. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Any further discussion on the said bill?
Uh, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
Acknowledging the statement made by Floor Leader, I'd like to say that notwithstanding that, and because of the special circumstance with, in which the state of Koshai is in now, such a statement saying the Alati says we should do this should not carry forward as authorizing Congress to make amendments without the expressed knowledge of members of Congress representing those states.
Noted, Chairman Christian. Any further discussion? If no objection, question has been called for, we will vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso.
Aye.
Senator Ardoz. Senator Christian.
Aye.
Senator Figuer. Senator Collin. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence. Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romalo.
Aye.
Senator Ruzmahl. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, we have ten affirmative votes to the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading CB number twenty-three dash ninety-one. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
None, Mr. Speaker.
If no other placements, next item, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item twenty, resolution calendar. The first resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one twenty-three for adoption. CR Number Twenty-three dash one twenty-three is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of seven hundred seventy-two thousand fifty dollars from the, from the United States Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to fund and accelerate the prevention and control of HIV, viral hepatitis, sexually transmitted, transmitted disease, and tuberculosis in the Federated States of Magonisha and United States affiliated Pacific Islands, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman, Madam Chair Conman.
Move for adoption of said resolution.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We are now on CR Number Twenty-three dash one twenty-three. Motion for adoption, so discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
I would like to request that the chairperson for the Committee on Health, please work with the department to minimize their use of such grant funds to post banners around the island. I, I, I go to the U.S. and I don't see such banners floating around their streets. And, you know, those banners are expensive and they do eat into some of these grants. And I wish we could stop doing that, you know? Issue maybe little sheets of paper and distribute them to people.
Great. Thank you.
That's, that's, thank you, Chairman. Chairman Woman.
Any further discussion? If none, and if there's no objection. Madam Chair Abelio Alfonso.
In relation to what Chairman Christian has raised, I believe that is part of their efforts to raise awareness and campaign for the public to be mindful and to remind them of this issue. So, I'm not exactly sure how much money is put into that effort, but I, I think that's one of the strategic plans that the department has. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any further discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
Fine, if those signs need to be put up, they have to be in Pompe, and if those signs are in Pompe, not in English.
Noted, Chairman Christian, thank you. Any further discussion on the proposed resolution? If none, we will vote on the adoption of CR Number Twenty-three dash one two three. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR Number Twenty-three dash one two three has been adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one two four for adoption. CR Number Twenty-three dash one two four is a resolution expressing the sincere appreciation of the twenty-third Congress of the Federated States of Magonisha to Mr. Shochi Sato for his dedication to a strong friendship and partnership between the Federated States of Magonisha, or the FSM, and Japan as the former ambassador of Japan to the FSM and, and executive director of the Association for Promotion of International Cooperation.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion on CB number, CR Number Twenty-three dash one two four.
I move to defer the, um, said resolution to the... I move to defer action on the said resolution.
To when? Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer its action on CR Number Twenty-three dash one two four to tomorrow's calendar. Discussion? If none, no objection, we will vote on said motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has deferred its action on CR Number Twenty-three dash one two four to tomorrow's calendar. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one eleven for adoption. CR Number Twenty-three dash one eleven is a resolution ratifying the agreement under the, the United Nations Convention on the Law of the Sea on the Conservation and Sustainable Use of Marine Biological Diversity of Area Beyond National Jurisdiction, or the BBNJ Agreement.
Short recess. Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the resolution be deferred to tomorrow's calendar at eleven oh three.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer its action on CR Number Twenty-three dash one eleven to tomorrow's calendar. Discussion? No discussion, no objection. We will vote on said motion. All those in favor of the deferment of CR Number Twenty-three dash one eleven say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now deferred its action on CR Number Twenty-three dash one eleven. Next item, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're, we're still under the resolution calendar for item twenty. The next resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one one six for adoption. CR Number Twenty-three dash one one six is a resolution approving and accepting a grant from the Green Climate Fund, or GZ, GZF, through the United Nations Office for Project Services, or UNOPS, and the Secretariat of the Pacific Regional Environment Program, or SPRP, in the amount of one million four hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars for funding the, the implementation of the national adoption planning in the Federated States of Magonisha project, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Madam Chair Abelio Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move to adopt CR Number Twenty-three dash one sixteen. I saw move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number Twenty-three dash one sixteen. Discussion?
Point of information, Speaker?
State your point.
It says, in the amount of one point four five nine eight hundred for funding the implementation of the national adaption planning?
Adaptation.
I believe that's adaptation. We can treat that as technical. Okay.
Adoption, in this case, means katapala.
If no further discussion, question has been called for, and if no objection, we will vote on said motion to adopt CR Number Twenty-three dash one sixteen. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR Number Twenty-three dash one sixteen has been adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
Sir.
Short recess. Next resolution, Chief Clerk?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
I move that Congress Resolution Twenty-three twenty-two pertaining to the nomination and confirmation of Deputy Chief of Mission for the Japan Embassy be placed on the calendar for action.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my motion to place Congress Resolution Twenty-three dash twenty-two on today's resolution calendar for action.
Thank you, Chairman Christian. Noted, it was not seconded, so since...
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
I move that we stand in recess until tomorrow at ten.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stands in recess until tomorrow at ten. And before we do that, may I ask if any other resolutions, and especially the confirmation resolutions, that we alert the Chief Clerk on what we need to get through? We have that presidential communication urging us to act on those nominations that will be deemed rejected during this session, so. With that, the motion is to stand in recess until tomorrow at ten. All those in favor of the said motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until tomorrow at ten a.m.